Township's supportive commissioners caucus meeting. Tonight, we will have a presentation. But in the meantime, let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we're here for a conditional use hearing. For the application for Burmese Buddhist Association of Philadelphia. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our solicitor. Mike Karate.
Good evening. So as the president noted, my name is Mike Karate. I'm the solicitor for the township, the attorney for the township. We have the conditional use hearing tonight for your property at 206 Meeting House Road. It's been advertised in the newspaper. The, I understand the notices went out to the neighboring properties. The property was posted today and I'll have a question for you guys on that in a second. I have a number of board exhibits to enter into the record for tonight. To get them in the record. The first is exhibit B1, which is the application for conditional use approval that these folks are seeking. They're seeking relief under sections 600-13 and 600-20 of our zoning ordinance. In order to allow for a religious use, a place of worship at their property, the 206 Meeting House property. Exhibit B2 is the notice for tonight's hearing that was advertised in the newspaper. And exhibit B3, which will supplement later, will be the proof publication. To kind of explain why we're here and what this involves. So a conditional use is a use that's allowed under our zoning ordinance. As long as someone comes in for a hearing and establishes certain criteria in terms of what they're, what they're seeking. It's a, it's a semi-formal proceeding. The folks up here, they are the judge of the application. At the end of the presentation, you're, you'll be, whoever is going to discuss, it's going to be sworn in. At the end of that, the, will probably adjourn for tonight. Ultimately, the board will issue a decision. Anyone who disagrees with the decision can take an appeal from that to the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. And there's a whole process that's involved in that. Presuming though, that if you're accepted or approved, you're off to the races in terms of the zoning approval that you seek. The board can impose conditions on that based on the testimony that's presented before them. And so on. The, since it's a formal proceeding, we do typically ask if there's anyone here who wants to be a party other than the applicant. Seeing that there's no one here other than the three representatives of the applicant and the township zoning officer. I don't expect that there's any need to ask for party status of any other individuals. We can instead note a couple of things for the record. The the property was posted today. Under the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code, there's a posting requirement typically that it's posted a week beforehand. But unfortunately, that wasn't done. Are you guys agreeable to waiving that provision of the municipalities planning code? The, the posting requirement on your property? Okay, thank you. And we'll, we will have the court reporter take your name down. So we can get it up in the record appropriately. We will officially hold this hearing open until our meeting next week. Just in case someone comes out of the woodwork and sees the notice and wants to come in to make a comment or have something to say about the application for, for what it's worth. In terms of the application itself, we have, as your application packet, it's got a number of exhibits to it, including, I think, an aerial of the, the property. And your parking plan and some photographs as well. So you can feel free to refer to those. If you have anything additional beyond that that you want to submit tonight, just let me know because we'll officially enter that as an exhibit into the record. Okay? With that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you gentlemen. Whoever's going to be your, maybe your official spokesman, if they can go up to the microphones, we can all see, hear you. State and spell your name for the, for the record and for the court reporter. And try to speak clearly just and slowly. So she can take down everything that you say. Mr. Mon, just for the, can you spell your name for the court reporter? And can we have you sworn in? Can you swear from the court reporter's while you're swearing now, just so that anything you say is officially into the record?
Yes, I tell the truth. Yeah. Nothing the truth.
And there's two other gentlemen here with you tonight. Are they going to speak or are you going to primarily do all the speaking?
I'm primarily the one going to speak. These two gentlemen are our board of members, board of directors, and they're directors of our organization.
Now, can you walk us through what's, what's physically on the property in terms of like buildings and structures? And then if you can, can kind of give us more meat on the bones in terms of what you want to use?
Yeah, we just purchased this building in May of this year. So this is a single family house with a two-car detached garage. And it's the, the lot is about, I would say about an acre. I'm not quite sure, but it's about an acre. And we have two-car garage. And in from the car garage, we can park another like 12 more cars we can park. So in the whole property, we can park about 12 to 14 cars. So when people come to our property and people will come to worship or to come and visit the Buddhist monks who reside there. And people will come occasionally for their religious activities. So we believe we, our property is good enough to offer people as a place of worship and place of free meditation center, daytime meditation center. Also, the property has what, three bedrooms? Yeah, three bedrooms. And one, one bed? One bedroom.
Is ever, is anyone living on the, the property full-time?
Yes, monks, actually a monk or two monks live there. Full-time permanently.
And can, can you just note your name for the court reporter?
My name is George Chin. Last name is C-H-I-N. First name is G-E-O-R-G-E.
And George, what you just stated, because I'm not sure if the microphone caught it. There'd be one to two monks in there generally, but it might float. They might float in and out depending on who's, who's in there to worship.
Sometimes like at my, we have a senior monks, he's very old. He doesn't like cold weather. Sometime he has to travel to Burma and stay there for a few months and he's come back always. Junior months always right there.
Okay. And, and can, can you kind of generally describe what, what worship means to you guys and kind of what it involves operationally or physically? Like, how many people come and are there hours that they come and days of the week?
Not too many because like daytime, probably like, like two or three, like a sometime like a family member, like a four or five family member come in. They pray, they talk to their monks and then whatever they need, their family matter also meditation or some related things. They talk to the monks all the time. That's it. And like a celebration, we might have like a two or three times a year, that's all. Not very busy.
And i- is that seven days a week that folks come in and out?
Yes, depend, not seven days, we prepare in and out. Not seven days, sometime probably maybe two to three days, maybe five or six people coming. Sometime we can, nobody going to show up. Depend on their family matter. They show up to the temple or worship, that kind of stuff.
And is the worship primarily meditation, which I assume is quite a fair?
Like the Buddhist is totally not, not like a Roman Catholic. Not like every Saturday or Sunday they're watching. Buddhist depend on the people. Sometime they have a problem, they go to there, they worship with their people, like in and out. Now, in Philadelphia, not talking about surrounding by that, we only have maybe less than 200 Buddhists. Related people living around right here, that's all.
And, and is your use any different in terms of kind of scope and context than, than anyone who would be having like a, a prayer meeting at their house? Is that kind of the, what I'm hearing you say in terms of how the intensity of what you're doing?
Normally, the people will come.
Mr. Mon, just make sure to speak into the mic just so everyone can hear you.
Hello. Can you hear?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, normally people will come to the monastery Buddhist temple occasionally. Not every Sunday and not every day, not every Saturday. Occasionally depends on what their religious needs are. So they'll come to the temple and they pray, they pray quietly, not like a Christian church. We don't sing. We pray and we bow to the Buddha statues in the Buddha statue room. So we pray, then we speak to the monks there and the monk were chant necessarily Buddhist teaching. And then people go home. That's, that's pretty much it.
Have you been having services since you moved in? And if so, have any, have any of your neighbors complained or raised any issues with it?
No, we don't have any complaint, our neighbor. But we, we do have a gathering about, let's say about 30 peoples gathering, one gathering recently. But our neighbors did not complain. We also offer food to the visitors and we also give food to our neighbors. So our neighbor seemed to be pretty fine.
For the two to three celebrations a year, do you, do you know about how many people you anticipate would be max showing up for that?
Uh, max about 10 to 20 people.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the gathering you had this year was about 30? Those 30 kind of the max number of people you expect would be?
Yeah, that's, that's very, very maximum. I would say normally 10 to 20, 10, 15. Occasionally sometimes with people heard about our activities, they might come and join. So that's why we have 30s recently. But officially, we would say maximum 10, 10 people.
And I think you said before, you can accommodate up to 12 to 14 parking spots on, on sites, all on the property?
On site, yeah. Off-street onsite. If necessary, we can also create more parking spot. You can in the back of the property there, we can land. So we can create more parking lots.
I would just caution you, before you do any kind of paving or anything like that, there, there are regulations that anyone has to go through before you do that. So make sure to touch base with the township.
I understand we will seat permit if we want to do it.
Are you guys proposing any signage for the, the building itself? Or is it just going to otherwise look like a, a house?
It's look like a house, no, no signage at this time.
Are you planning to do any other work on the property in terms of expanding the building or knocking the building down and putting a new one? Or is it just in, in the building you have now?
Yeah, we use the building we have now. We don't have any plan to knock down the property.
Are the services themselves, are they primarily held indoors or is it a mix of indoors and outdoors?
Yes, a mix of indoors and outdoor. Occasionally indoor, occasionally outdoor. So we would say a mix.
Have you had any events or instances in the, since you've moved in or at any of your other locations where you haven't had enough parking onsite?
No, we don't have that issues. We have, we have enough parking space.
That's all the questions I have unless any of the commission members have any questions.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that you, you had no plans for signage at this time. What you said, so are there, do you have signage at your other locations? Are you going to be adding or applying for signage at some point in the future?
No, not necessarily. We don't intend to do that. But we may not even need it. It's like, we can operate like a single family home. We can operate quietly. We don't need sign.
Okay. And what made you choose that location or this area? I see that you're incorporated, you're out of Philadelphia. What, what was attractive about this location?
Uh, this location is suitable for our activities. It has a enough land space for our activities. And this all have good building for the people to come and pray. So it's not too close to other neighbors. So that's why we choose this area. Also, the price is what we can afford as well. But then we choose this property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from our engineer?
The commission is going to go first.
Based on something Mike wrote to us earlier about the sewage service. Do you agree with that whether it's adequate?
So, yeah, so I mean, I think there were a lot of questions on how many users you were going to have and you were just speaking to that. So your maximum number that you recently just had, it sounded like 30 people in, in the house. And what is there, is there one bathroom in the, how many bathrooms?
Yeah, that's outdoor. We, we just have an outdoor activities.
Oh, okay.
Not, not indoor. Indoor.
Probably we might have a five or six people, that's it, that's it max.
Okay. And so, so what kind of bathroom facilities do you have during an outdoor event? So they would go inside and use the indoor bathroom?
But not outside, most of the time it's inside. It's a meditation, it's a
Sure.
Inside the
I was trying to get an idea of what, what happens.
Outside means it's sometime like a summer time. Probably they're doing something outside, that's all.
But, but they would use the indoor bathroom?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I mean, as you had said before, like some of the other churches in the area may have several hundred people come to a congregation, which could be an issue for sewage. In your case, it doesn't sound like that would really be an issue. So not as, you know, not as concerned with that.
I have some questions. My apologies for being late tonight. I was trying to get done work as fast as I could. Has the township completed? I guess this is a question more for the township, but have, have they completed a review to see if any improvements need to be made to the property for it to be run as a place of worship? Is, is it going to meet all the regulations for a place of worship?
In terms of, you're thinking ADA accessibility?
ADA accessibility, bathrooms, parking. I'm, I'm looking at the way the cars are set up. It doesn't look like it's the ideal condition. But, you know, I just want to make sure that there's been a review. If it's going to be a place of worship, that it meets any regulations that, so people can gather there for that, for that type of service.
And before we get an answer to that, just to, to make clear, the, the only thing this board is doing right now is considering the conditional use approval. Of course, we'd assume that you, part of that would be conditioned on complying with any other applicable township ordinances or regulations that would, would buy your property. But we can let Bill answer better than me, if he has any thoughts on it.
So I, I just want to make sure that the advocate understands that if the, if, if the board agrees to the conditional use, there might be, the, the most likely is going to be improvements that you need to make. So are you aware of that process?
Say it again, we're not sure, we, we hear.
If the board says okay to the conditional use, your property, my understanding is going to, go to have to go through a review to make sure that it meets any type of standards for a place of worship. Which means you might have to add additional costs in order to make the, make the improvements. Whether it be ADA accessibility, parking, bathrooms. Are you aware that you, that you could go through that process and, and have those additional costs?
Yes, we, we understand. We would have, yeah, we will have to follow regulation rules and regulation of the city and the, the area. We understand that.
And were the neighbors notified about tonight's conditional meeting, hearing? Was, was there a letter sent? I'm sorry, again, my, my apologies for, for walking in late. So if that was presented, I just, I just, I just would like to know.
The requirement is that five, 500 square feet. So I sent
It's, it's a radius.
47, like all the letters.
Okay.
This is that. But the returns is I only receive is five right now.
Okay.
And then one is like an incorrect address or something like that they returned, that's I received it today.
Okay.
But I sent 47 houses with these receipt and then a payment.
Within the, it's a 500-foot radius, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And George, if you could just hand that to Bill, because we'll mark that as exhibit B4, just to have it up the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take him, that'd be great.
Are there any additional questions from the board or professionals?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify a little bit more on the parking. So you had mentioned you had, when you were speaking earlier, you had 12 to 14 parking spaces. And from the exhibit, I guess, that you prepared or that you submitted, it shows, I guess, you know, cars parked in the driveway, like stacked, going all the way out towards Meeting House Road. Is that where the, is that where you're saying everybody would just be parked bumper to bumper in the driveway to?
No. We have, we have like a two garages, so we can, one side's a lot, at least allowed to park like five cars at least. And then both sides, we have a round, the middle allows to get out. We don't, we don't park like a bumper to bumper like that.
So, so you're not anticipating to park as shown? But it's, it's on the grass. It's not, it's not paved, is that correct? Right, so, okay. Yeah, so I mean, and one of the things too with, with this kind of setup is that we have in our ordinance that you need, you know, you would, with anything like this, you would want to exit onto Meeting House Road in a forward direction. And kind of the way that it's shown right now, you may have to back out on the Meeting House Road, which we wouldn't want. Would you be willing to have some type of turnaround or, you know, a space that you could have to make sure that those cars could turn around? Come out in a forward space?
We go back and then right behind the garage and then turn around and ride back.
I guess my point is that you, you may need to add some additional paving to get it to work properly, to get the proper number of cars to fit in there. And that was, that leads to my next question, which was, when you had, say, 30 people there, how many cars were actually parked there? Do you, do you recall?
10 cars. It's got one family, it's got the five people.
And, and what, and, and how did they end up parking? Was that kind of like what is shown in the exhibit that was submitted or were they parked on the grass? That's generally, they generally park on the paving though? That they try to park in the driveway paving?
Inside the driveway, not on the driveway. On the driveway as well. But the, the picture shows on the driveway.
It, it does, that's why I'm, I'm asking. So are you saying that they park on the grass then, next to the driveway?
If we have more car, we don't have space, we park on the grass.
And how many, how many cars can you fit back by the garage? Like, how many could you, like, come in and turn, turn sideways and, and park?
That, that lots allow at least 10 cars right there. Easy to get out. Five and five.
Five on one side and five on the other?
Yes.
I mean, it, it doesn't appear to be that large. Unless you're parking on the grass.
I think he's talking about right behind the house, between the house and the garage.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's wide enough to have.
Yeah.
I mean, you could probably fit, you know, car, a bunch of cars sideways in between the, the houses so that they could back out and come out of the driveway, you know, in the front, forward-facing direction. But I guess that was, you know, my, my whole concern here is that if, you know, this were to go forward and this goes through, like you said, you know, some of the other, you know, reviews, one of the things would be just to make sure that the parking can be adequately obtained on the site and that they, and that the vehicles could safely be, you know, maneuvered to come out in a forward direction. And, and not really be blocking each other in, you know, the way that this is. And if you're only having a few people at a time, I don't anticipate that as being a problem. And some of these larger events that you're saying, and even though they're not all that large, fitting 10 cars in, in this, you know, you may end up blocking, you know, blocking each other in. And that's something I think that the, the fire marshal will probably have to look at for, for their access and to make sure of. and to make sure of, like, safety issues and just like general safety. And like I said, in, in pulling out on the Meeting House Road, want to make sure they could come out in a forward-facing direction. So it could, it could be that, you know, you end up getting the, the amount of space that you're talking about in that back area, but it might need a little extra paving to allow for a turnaround or some extra cars to fit without going on the grass. You know, if it's dry, you know, nice and dry out and everything, it'd be, you know, parking on the grass isn't a big deal. When it gets muddy, you end up tracking mud, you know, down your driveway now on the Meeting House Road. So that's not something that when you get involved in, it ends up, you know, messing up your, your own property as well. So. These are just some of the, you know, that's some of the, the parking concerns that I had in the driveway. And just wanted to make sure you were amenable to the potential for maybe having to expand some of the paving to allow for, like I said, either turnaround or, or parking that is not, you know, blocking in, you know, a certain amount of other, other cars.
We, we understand your concern. Any event, be prepared to cooperate whatever the city or the fire marshal if you feel we require regulations.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Needles, did you have anything? Okay.
So again, just procedurally, we'll, we'll adjourn the, the hearing tonight. It'll be continued till next week, and it might be opening up and closing in next week if no one shows up to, to, to want to participate in it. Next week it'll be at seven thirty?
Yeah.
Yep.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty next week. So there won't be another advertisement for it. After that point, presuming that no one else shows up who wants to be a party for this, I expect the board would have a decision that it would be issuing at our January meeting. Okay?
Thank you. So next week, what, what day?
Next Thursday. Yep.
Seven thirty.
Correct. Seven thirty.
Oh, yeah. We'll say something about that.
The twelfth? Yeah. So it's Thursday, so it's, it's going to be Thursday, December the twelfth at seven thirty. Okay. So one week from, from, from tonight.
The parking you're talking about, that's just maybe probably two times a year for the ten car. Usually we only have the two cars. That's all. Two or, not more than three. That's, I just want to clear that. You're talking about we might have a ten car. That's just probably twice a year, maybe less than ten cars.
Sure.
Because we only have like thirty people to show up. Some, some family had their five, member of the family, they all come with their one minivan.
Understood.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
December seventh thirty.
Yep. December twelfth. Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion? Motion to adjourn? Continue it?
Well, we adjourned for tonight. It's continued till next, next Thursday. Yep. Correct.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting. Can we stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Needles, will you do roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Baco.
Here.
Commissioner Goryoso.
Here.
Michael Crony.
Here.
Mr. Whitaker.
Here.
Michael Seokah.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
All right, thank you. This evening, we're going to have a presentation, the Upper Chichester Historical Site Survey by Mr. Brian Seidel. Grab the mic.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Seidel, Township Planner. Got it. All right. Brian Seidel, Township Planner, here this evening presenting the Historic Resource Plan. This has been a project that's been in the works for about the last year now. It started off with a grant application and award from Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission for a partial funding of the plan. The Historic Resources Plan the township had is from 19-- the last version is from 1983, so it's outdated, doesn't have a great inventory of structures. Since then, in the 2005 Joint Municipal Plan, Joint Municipal Comprehensive Plan, there was also a historic resources inventory that was included there. And you may have seen in some of the community meetings that we brought these exhibits here to those meetings, and basically the different charts are showing resources that were identified in the '83 plan, resources that were identified in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, and basically they didn't all communicate or jive. So, the '83 report provided a great inventory and great background of information. What we felt that it lacked was the cohesiveness and relationship to the town in terms of pictures, images, and location of where these structures were located. So as part of the process, what we did is we broke the resources into the neighborhoods that we've been working with in developing our neighborhood plans for Excelsior Village, Lynnwood Heights, Lynnwood Park, and all of the neighborhoods here. And we broke out those maps to identify the resources within those individual neighborhoods. But what I'm showing here is the-- some of the original documents that we provided at the community events. In September, we prepared a draft for review. And basically, this is the original report here. Two hundred and fifty pages was that report. We worked with the task force, the task force, and Cindy is here this evening, was very hands-on in the development of this plan. We started out with the premise of trying to develop a very detailed inventory of all of these resources, but after developing this two hundred and fifty-page document, it was still a little incohesive. It had a lot of gaps in it, but it did provide a good foundation for what we intend to do or can pursue in the future for additional updates. The plans that you have with you now, much thinner version. The text is generally the same in terms of the written format. However, the biggest thing was the change of the format that was provided for the individual, identifying the individual resources. So the maps that I have in front of you on the boards here, these have been updated. What we were previously showing is just existing resources as they exist today. We've updated these maps to show both the demolished sites and the existing sites, and we felt that was important so we can identify the character of these areas as we're going and doing these neighborhood plans. What was the character of these historic structures? What were the materials that were utilized? So this provides a great foundation for that. The new format that's provided in your reports now basically shows a side-by-side comparison of the photographs, the historic photograph, if it's available, and our current day photograph. So you can see side-by-side what the changes, what the impacts are. And we also related that back not only to tax parcel maps, but an address, and again, location within the township on these individual maps. And we also provided township-wide maps with all of those resources as well. So it may be, some of the maps may be redundant. We started out with a simple aspect of showing a map, showing the number, which would relate back to a key. But the current version basically relates those structures back to each map. So it's very clear as we're looking at each neighborhood, township-wide, zoning districts, where these resources are located. So, you know, I commend the task force. While we were involved with the mapping and assembling the plan, the task force was extremely helpful and provided essentially all of the information for the historic photographs, the resource inventory, the descriptions, and the overview of the history of the township. So, provide that for the Commissioners' review, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Didn't we get this already? Because I thought I left comments in my-- but it's not in my board.
Mr. Brian, thanks for working with the historical siding, putting it together. So I know, I know that they were happy to work with you.
I know this was a long time coming, and I know we've had several, I guess, projects over the years in trying to identify which areas within the township were historical. I know Cindy has been a champion of that, so I thank you for your work in this project. It's truly appreciated. Yeah, looking forward to moving forward with the plan. Thank you. George?
Forty-two.
Is there one portion of the township that is the most historic?
In terms-- we looked at this, and we were asked that question previously. I guess there's the two aspects of that. One, Boothland Town Center in that neighborhood generally has most of the historic structures, but it is pretty spread out. What we identified more than anything is looking at those major roadways, like Chichester Avenue, for example. It encompasses several neighborhoods, but it's more of those corridors that I would call it as being not necessarily a historic district or historic area, but certainly a corridor that contains several of those historic properties.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to our public comment. If anyone has any questions, or I shouldn't say questions, any feedback or any thing that you want to share with the Board of Commissioners, please come to the podium and give us your name, address, and phone number in the event that we need to follow up with you. Is there anyone from the right side of the room that wants to address the board? Anyone from this side of the room want to address the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our agenda. We'll start with our professionals' report, our engineers' report, Mr. Seok.
Thank you, Madam President. I trust you have a copy of my report. I'll go over some highlights. The Kingsman Park Project, giving you a quick update there. I spoke with the contractor this week. They are working on getting all their submittals together. We, and also, just so you know, the contracts have been fully executed and distributed, so everything's ready to go. Contractor, like I said, is getting submittals together. They're expecting to start work late January slash February. Turi Road Bridge Project Update, that's one we received a grant for just very recently. We met with PennDOT this past week. We talked about the grant requirements and procedures required to move forward. They have some additional information they're supposed to get over to us to incorporate into the specifications and bid package. You had authorized us to move forward with that. We do already have the existing conditions planned together and survey work together for that. So working with PennDOT on just getting those, those last kind of items to put into the spec package and bid package, and we will be moving forward with that. Somerset Drainage Project Update. I had reached out to Mike Pierce and, and spoke with Lisa in my office today. They had reached out to Somerset last month, actually, I guess it was the end of October. They had responded back that they are getting together. They needed, I guess, a few more signatures for a couple that were either out of date or, or out of compliance with exactly what they wanted to see. They were getting a clarification on the plan that actually they were going to move forward with and supposed to get that back to us. The, their lawyer had responded back to us that he was working on that and should be getting that back to us shortly. Again, that was back in mid-October, so we'll, we'll have to follow up with them to see where, where they stand with that. But we still haven't heard back from them since they, since they had said that. Next item would be the 2021 Green Light Go Signal Replacement Project. We had a meeting with, with, with PennDOT in the state, who had given the grant for this, to go over some of the timelines and, and how best to move forward with this. They put together a timeline where this would need to be done by June of next year, which we could certainly have everything bid prior to that, but they want all the money spent by then. So we came up with a, a way to target this, these improvements and get this done within their required timeline. It'll involve ordering the signal equipment through Co-Stars, bidding out the remainder of the project, you know, through standard, standard bidding practices. We did have our traffic consultant meet with PennDOT for a poll spotting meeting earlier this week. And that seemed to go well. So we're getting together the bid package for that, and actually, we'll be asking for authorization to bid that project in the, in the PennDOT-recommended manner for the, to meet their timeline. And it'll, like I said, it'll involve ordering some of it through Co-Stars and some of it through standard bidding practices. So we'll be asking for that at your, at your next meeting, for that authorization for bidding. And I think that's all I have at this time, unless the board has any questions.
Any questions for our engineer?
I have one. Somerset.
Yes.
Is that going to have to go back out for bid? No, we discussed that.
I believe so. That's what we talked about.
It does seem like it's going to have to go back out to bid. We, so the, the thing that might get brought up about the signatures, you know, because they had told us everything was not, that came from their end, that they had to change a couple of things from their attorney said that. So then they indicated they would get back to us once they had completed all that.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Moving on to our solicitors' report, Mr. Crady.
Yeah, so first on our report is the open burning ordinance. We, we already have your authorization to advertise it. We did get some feedback from Commissioner Neary, who got some feedback from others. We've incorporated that in the draft. We expect to have that on our agenda for approval at our January meeting. Next, we just, of course, went through the hearing for the conditional use hearing for 206 Meeting House Road. And that'll, that'll continue on next week for the hearing portion of it to be closed up with the expectation that we'll have a resolution for consideration at our January meeting. And we have three extension requests for, one for 4881 Chichester, second for 801 Bethel, and the third for 4128 Chichester. For 4881, we, we haven't, we, we received the verbal that they are going to be submitting it. We haven't seen the actual written request. So to the extent that we don't receive it by next Tuesday or so, we will bear accordingly for you guys to make a decision on that next week. And then number six on our list, brake retarder prohibition. The, talking with George and township manager and staff, there was a, a study done back in 2022, I believe, to get PennDOT okay and authorization to prohibit engine braking and brake retarders on a portion of Conchester Highway and then a portion of Mill Road from two different areas. We've prepared the draft ordinance to implement it. And if you guys are okay with that, next week, we'll have you authorize that to advertise, put in the paper, and ready for your consideration at our January meeting.
I got a email from somebody, I think I forwarded it to you. When will the signs go up if it's passed?
So the signs will go up, you know, it'll, if it's passed, then it's effective five days afterward. So five days after our January meeting, part of the ordinance authorized the procurement in the direction of the signs. PennDOT's already given direction in its approvals to where the sign should go for it. So it's just a matter of getting the signs ordered to that point unless we have them in-house and getting them put up.
Yeah, we should note that when, when that did, when they did that study, we did ask for them to do all of the township, all of the state-owned roads in Upper Chichester. And those were the only two that came back that, that could have that done. So there was quite a few people on Namens Creek Road that had asked for some relief there. Unfortunately, it did not meet the qualifications.
That's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our managers' report, Mr. Needles.
Good evening, everybody. The first item that I have is next week, we'll be asking you to make, to consider a motion on the 2025 final budget. I gave a budget presentation at our November caucus meeting and then spoke more about the budget at the November meeting. Currently, we are looking at a budget of $16,973,184.16 in revenues and expenditures balanced budget. That includes no increase to the real estate tax, and it does include an $80 increase to the trash fee to help cover the costs that we are seeing for residential trash collection. The other thing to note is it just, you know, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I know that there's a lot of news out there about the county needing to raise the taxes quite significantly to catch up with costs. You know, when I saw that, I, I did an additional going back to ensure that we are still on the same path which we are, which is, we have been switching towards more of a, like, pay-for-use model over the years, where we rely a little bit more on our fees as well as our earned income taxes than we do on our real estate tax with the intention that, you know, eventually, hopefully, we can get to a point where, you know, everything that people are, it's tangible, everything is much possible that people can pay for. So I am not concerned that we are not touching the real estate tax for the Joe 16th, 15th, 16th? How many years? How many years? 16 years? 14. So 14 years. So no, no real estate tax increase. Balanced budget that maintains and in some levels increases the level of service to the residents. Because of that goes to number two, real estate tax. We can do that by resolution because there's no change to the millage rate. So we'll have a resolution for your consideration. We advertised the ordinance for the trash fee because of the increase in the trash fee. I have in your packets the 2025 meeting, proposed meeting schedule. Not as many changes as we've had to see in the past due to holidays, but I asked you all to check it. We have checked it three times in the office. I also have the 2025 Township Holiday Schedule in your pamphlets as well. Please take a look at that. The 2024 Audit Engagement Letters from the auditor. That would be for the Township Audit, the Three Pension Plan Audits, and the Tax Collector Audit. In January, you all have some appointments that will need to be made. We've updated that sheet as it was mentioned last month that there was a couple errors with that. And then I believe, Michael, that we'll be receiving a, a letter for a resignation from one of the boards, from your awards, correct?
Correct. Did he come in today?
I did not receive any.
Okay. All right, I'll touch base with him again.
Annually, we give out employee service awards for employees who meet, meet certain milestones. That list is being worked on and scrubbed, and we will have that for the beginning of the meeting in December. We'll have two escrow releases on the, the docket for you. We will have a resolution approving and accepting the historic site survey. We will have an update, well, the update is that we've been continuously working on everything with the Stormwater Authority. We held the open house, was, I would say, attended. We had some people that were able to make it out. We are getting ready to set up the boards out here in the lobby so that there's information here for people over the next couple of months, as well as we have a one cheater that we've been giving out. We did look through the information of the, like, the, how many email opens, how many Delco Alert opens, and then how many visits on the website. So it does appear that we reached quite a few people with the information about the Stormwater Authority upcoming and everything related to that. So we'll continue to do that outreach. In your packet, you have a RFQ/RFP, we're still trying to hone in on what it's actually going to end up being, for ambulance evaluation services. Again, this goes back to a couple of months ago, is proved to, to go ahead and start to prepare and advertise that to evaluate the current services being provided and potential changes that, that, you know, could be evaluated for those types of services. You have a grant resolution application for an America 25 grant, I'm sorry, America 250 grant. We are applying for funding that they are giving out for various events to celebrate the 250th birthday of the United States. We are hoping to do the, really do up the Independence Day celebration here in the township. So we'll be applying for funding for that. And the last item I have is that you have a request from the Police Department and from the, approved through the Fire Department for the appointment of a special fire police officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our manager? All right, moving on, we will go to our committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Neary.
Thank you, Madam President. The check runs for the month are in the book already, and the police report is as well. Any other reports will be available next week. I appreciate all the work the solicitors' burning ordinance, and hopefully, we can get that moved in. And I'll be sending that to the two residents who are most concerned about it or have expressed the most concern about it. But thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Neary? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner Joe Baacka.
Thank you. All our reports are on file. Highway insubordination. Move along. Nothing more to do. Do you want to, your reports on file? Unless Mike has anything to do on the force meeting.
The only thing I had heard was that they had a, they did have a, what I heard was a productive meeting with Lower Chichester. Delcor was providing some additional information. It, it was apparently a couple of weeks ago, and I'm told it should be resolved in the very near future. But, yeah, exactly.
Any questions for Commissioner Bakker? We'll move on to Commissioner Guardiola.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Not to reiterate what's already previously stated, 4881 Chichester Avenue is coming before the board next month for an extension. 801 Bethel Avenue is also coming before the board next, I meant, these are for next week. Next week, December 12th, is coming for an extension. 4128, as our solicitor mentioned, we haven't received anything, but it's on the agenda for an extension request for next week, December 12th. He will update us if the, well, not, if the request is not going to be made. 4433 Garfield Avenue. There's an anticipated review with the Planning Commission on 12/19/2024. And that's about it. If anybody has questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Commissioner Guardiola? Hearing none. Okay, I'll move on to my report. Good evening, everyone. Again, kudos to the Historical Society and our, and working with our planner on the neighborhood projects. The library. We are hopeful to schedule some meetings in the near future so that we can solidify the lease agreement and get that project rolling. I also want to share that a long-term or longstanding library board member, Mr. David Schreiber, passed away. David Schreiber passed away, I think, I believe it was yesterday. We recently found out that he had been not well. So we need to, you know, maybe reach out and send something to his wife, Laura. George, I'll touch base with you about that. And recreation. We had our first tree lighting ceremony last week. So just want to read a couple of things and acknowledge some folks for that. Our tree lighting ceremony was a, was very well attended. It was freezing out, but still well-attended. Very nice event. So this will become an annual event for the township. We want to thank our sponsors, CBIZ, S&amp;T Bank, Wawa, and Blue Cherry Ice Cream, and all those that came out to perform, and Mrs. Claus, who made the event very special for the children. We also want to congratulate Blue Cherry Ice Cream on expanding to include a bakery. Their grand opening is going to be this Saturday, December the 7th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m., so please stop by. Those who attended the tree lighting ceremony, they gave out some coupons for their event as well. The next event that we're going to have is our holiday celebration in our Santa Sprint. Those events are, post, should be on the website as well as our Facebook page. The Santa Sprint is a 5K holiday celebration that will be on December 21st. The 5K starts at the wholesale fireworks at 10:00 a.m. and ends at the municipal building. Be sure to register ahead of time. The holiday celebration, same day, will be here from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. You'll have the opportunity to have your picture taken with Santa Claus and pizza, and we'll have gifts as a, as a part of our annual giveaway. We'll have gifts for each child that attends. Our sponsors for this event are Sun East Federal Credit Union and Skyworks. So I'll make sure I'll share that information again next week, but that's our recreation updates. And I think that's all I have this evening. If anyone has any questions for me or comments, feedback.
I just have one kind of like to make. Due to some family commitments, I might not be able to make it next week. I will let George know. But I just want, I just want the board to know that. And then there's And then, there's a, there's a black belt test this weekend at the gym.
Oh, okay, okay, cool.
Brian usually helps coordinate with that, so my daughter tends to be black belt.
Oh, nice, okay. So you'll be here?
Yeah, I'll be here. I'm always here for that.
Any other questions or comment? Yep, thank you. Any other questions or comments of the Board? Okay, hearing none, I'll have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.